Well, um, in the past, I, I, when Ted was on the council, Helen really, I'm the liaison, council liaison for the last time to the planning commission. And in the past, I used to send in cookies and stuff with my husband. But I thought since it was mine, pardon me?
We missed those.
Yes, well, I thought since it was the last meeting, I, I made some this afternoon. So I will leave them with you and then the planning and zoning can eat the rest of them. But I just wanted to, um, you know, say officially that, um, I have enjoyed the work you've done. I think it's an incredibly dedicated and talented commission. Um, I'm very proud of all the work that you have done. I appreciate it. Sometimes the council, gives you a big load to, to work on, but I think you have managed to address most of those, if not all of those topics in a timely way and in a way that I think, has been real highly accepted by the community. You're certainly your work on the city plan was just, you know, remarkable. So I just, as a citizen, I just really want to thank you. It's, it's pretty impressive what you do, the time you spend, and sometimes the irritated public that you have to address or answer to. But you do it with grace and thoughtfulness, and I think you have a marvelous staff. So I would just hope in the future that as you go forward with different changes, one of the things that I would love you to think about is as more development comes in, that we work with, or you work with the developers to really include open space in their developments, amenities for children and dogs. And also think about how we can, I think if every developer made a great big dog park and a great big playground, and then when it's time to give the city all the roads to plow and take care of, and at the same time they said, oh, and you get the dog park and the playground to take care of. I think that is really an issue for our rec and park department and just the resources. So if you can think of a way to have an HOA, see that as an amenity and maybe support that. I suspect when they build swimming pools, they don't see them over to the city and say, you know, you keep them clean and they're open for the public. Maybe that's how we get public pools in the city is to actually have that conversation with developers. But I, I'm really being facetious with that. But I would really like you to think about how we can add those amenities and also make them affordable. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Helen. I mean, it's been an amazing ride to work with you and take your guidance.
And thank you for all you've done for the city over many years.
Well, I thank you.
Yes, thank you for everything, Helen. I am gonna take two. Any other opened to the public items? Okay, Larry, I see you joined and you have your mute off. Are you, would you like to say something in the open to the public for items not related to the agenda?
Sorry, I meant to have my mute on. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Okay, announcements, so I think Paul had sent an email about the biggest announcement, which was the passing of the comp plan, the city plan 2024. And a big kudos to the Paul group and to council for their thoughtful reception and passing it on through. So I mean, it's, it was a huge effort by everyone here and some commissioners who have passed off the board and, and by staff, so. Kelsey, it is true that you really made the page number count. We did not help, we did not help with that at all. We were constantly trying to add more back in. It all worked out.
Thank you.
Darrellin, did you have an announcement or something? Sounds like, no, any other announcements? Oh, Darrellin, were you trying to say something? Okay, great, just making sure.
A couple of quick things. One, just to follow up on the city plan. Kelsey did a huge amount of work on it and it's really, really impressive. Also, I'm really excited by this city plan. I think this city plan for all of the hard work you put into it, for all the hard work that all the committees put into it, all the departments put into it, several hundred people participating. There was a, in the last plan, you put together your first, in the 2016 plan, the first time of trying to have these sort of four main themes to it. And one of the, uh, it was generally really well liked, but there was a, a few people who said, boy, this sure seems like mom and apple pie, like they're all kind of like nice things. This plan, I think, reflects the vision of this community. And that means it's not the plan of any community doing good work. It's the plan of this community doing good work. And every time I look at it, I get really excited by that because this is, for better or worse, this is the starting point, not the ending point of the plan. This is when the plan starts to be used for the next decade. And that's really, really exciting. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. Couple of other quick things. I noted that there is legislation continuing to move forward at the state level on a whole bunch of subjects, including updates slash round two of some of the home act, which is what we're working on right now. We're keeping an eye on that. I provided some feedback on some technical items within it. Largely what they're working on this year are things that you are already contemplating in the work that you're doing right now. At, at least at the municipal level, there is some, there's a whole bunch of Act 250 work as well. Other thing, a piece of the home act last year was that the state was mandated, that they mandated themselves to develop housing targets statewide, that the state would provide to each region, each regional planning commission, with the responsibility of each regional planning commission then determining a formula for allocating it for, to, to each municipality. So this is a new piece of the puzzle. It is intended to have targets for 2029, so five years into the future, and 25 years into the future, 2049 or 2050. So the, uh, I've met with the RPC as they're beginning to think about how would they develop the structure for taking whatever is given to them and then allocating at the regional level, uh, at the local level, thinking about all the different tools and ways in which one can think about it, whether it's natural resource constraints or local policy or regional policy or existing populations or infrastructure that exists and all these different ways of, of looking at it. They're trying to be on top of it so that when the numbers do come to them, that, that's not the starting point for them and they're not caught sort of on their back heels. So lots more to come on that, but just interesting discussion. Oh, yes. Yeah.
So last year, during the home act discussions, like we, we as a group provided some feedback because there was an idea that maybe that would be helpful for the legislation. So I guess if there's anything that you identify that it feels like it'd be good to have the commission weigh in on or give comment on, let us know.
Okay, and, and of course vice versa. If, if, you know, you all feel that there's something that you feel like you'd like to weigh in on with council, please feel free to communicate that to Jessica and Kelsey and I, and we will put her on the agenda. It's a two-way street, so. The other one, thank you, Kelsey, the really, really exciting news is that last week, the formal conservation of parcels B and C of the Auckland property officially went through. So this includes a whole bunch of usage of federal natural resource conservation fund, very high bar of conservation, basically the highest there is. Uh, it was a big project, multiple hour closing and five years in the making. So this is a tremendous project that has resulted in about somewhere in the neighborhood of 380 acres being permanently conserved. So many, many, many hands at the table for that, really exciting. And, and now, again, sort of like the city plan, now they get to do some really exciting work of how the next steps of, of making use of these properties and looking at some really new neat, neat tools, including an agrarian commons, which is a form of tax structure essentially. Yeah, to, to look at creating models of how the land can be used in an ecologically thoughtful and community-minded way for generations in the future, so, yeah.
And, and relatedly, and I, oh, sorry, relatedly, and I think importantly, there's also an associated about 11 acres of land that was part of the former Auckland farm property that has remained outside of the conservation easement with a bunch of other restrictions on it, city right or first refusal and other things. But with the, for the intention of that land being used as supporting land for the other agricultural lands. Because you, as Paul said, it's very tight conservation on the conserved land. So you can't do something like have a farm stand. You can't have farm worker housing. You can't have a farm-based preschool program or summer camp program, things like that you couldn't do on the conserved land. So they did reserve about 11 acres of land for those kinds of associated auxiliary uses to support that whole community farm structure.
And as you know, in the event that for some unlikely scenario, that can't come to fruition and the property owners go to sell it, the city has a right first refusal to acquire that land too, so.
Um, go ahead.
In your first update about the housing permits, does that have a name or bill number or something associated?
Yes, it's part of Act 47 from last year. So it's part of the, the home act, S100 slash Act 47 from the 2022, 23 legislative session. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we can move on to item five, the LDR updates. Starting with, I was gonna say habitat blocks, but I'm not sure that it's, yeah, habitat blocks.
Yeah, so I outlined everything, I outlined a lot in the memo. So I just wanted to first start with if anyone had questions about why we need to be considering these kinds of changes, how it relates to S100 Act 47, or if you're all feeling pretty comfortable about kind of why this sort of change that I've outlined in the memo is connected to the requirements of the new state law.
And I guess just for background, we've talked a lot about other parts of this, but have kind of pushed these harder topics down the road. So it's time to like, you know, I feel like in every meeting for the last three months, we've been like, and eventually we're gonna need to talk about habitat blocks and TDRs and so.
Yep. I mean, the, the, the very, the simplest version of how to explain it is we don't want there to be confusion about where development is or is not allowed in our community. And because, especially because if it's served by water and sewer, the density, allowed density has to be the equivalent of five units an acre. So there is no like one unit an acre or anything like that allowed anymore. We don't want to have issues come up in the future where someone comes in and says, I have 10, 10 acres of land, so I can have 50 units. This is really setting out to, to reach, to meet the same goals that you had from the previous updates to the LDRs related to habitat blocks and conservation PUDs and everything, have the same outcome, but do it in a way that conforms with S100 and is predictable moving forward with S100. So it's just another layer that is, means that how, how those intentions are achieved has to be tweaked a little bit. But the, the end goal is that the intentions will still be realized in a very similar way.
I was ready to look at some maps.
Let's do it.
So a, as we've done before, we'll intro, we'll, we'll start it with me showing it live, but then we'll make sure that you're able to look at and spend some time with it. It just takes a little orientation. Feel free to interrupt me at any point. I may, depending on the question, say, we're gonna get to that in a couple of minutes. As Kelsey alluded to, there, there's a few different tools that are kind of intertwined as the memo talks about here. So there's habitat blocks, there are conservation PUDs, there's the natural resource protection overlay district, and then there is TDRs, which we'll talk about later. These things kind of meld together, but I will do my best to not lose anybody as we go through here. I'm gonna start first with just a quick picture. Just a reminder and orientation, this is your now adopted future land use map. It should look familiar. It doesn't, can have a conversation afterwards. You know, I'm starting with this because ultimately this is, this reflects the policy that you're looking to do and this is obviously closely related to your zoning, but this is what we are trying to make sure that we're holding to. So I'm gonna turn this off. I can turn it back on at any point. Whoa. Uh, just kidding. No, I'm on, meant to keep the parcels on. That's where that was, okay. Um, I'm gonna start at the finish line here about the, um, our first cut at some recommended, recommended changes to your zoning. They won't make sense in the context of popping them up, but it's easier to start at the finish line and then tell you how we got there. So there are a number of different colors in here in little dots, and I'm gonna walk you through what they each represent. We can tour the city at various times, but I just kind of wanted to start with this. So the purple areas in here are some areas that the regulations currently, the adopted 2023 zoning regulations, uh, put this land in the natural resource protection district. However, the practical matter of these is that they either are built on, have sewer literally already serving them, or are approved under prior regulations slash court settlements whereby they are fully authorized to build. In the past, this wasn't necessarily problematic because you could say in 2023, it's NRP because the regulations in effect for the development were from 10 or 20 years ago. Now with the objective of lining up water and sewer areas to the zoning, it would be a, a, it, it potentially opens up some odd issues if the zoning says even today's zoning, don't build, but the water and sewer does. So the three at the top here are development areas that were approved through the settlement agreement with JM Gulf. Um, and one of these has been somewhat, and the infrastructures in and some of the homes are in. The fourth one here is off Hidden Meadow Lane, and the, there's a handful of homes in here for them, and the public water and sewer already goes there. It is already literally serving these homes off the Cobblestone Circle neighborhood. So from a practical matter, this is what the state law says, is that if it's served by water and sewer, it is five, four units an acre. It doesn't mean five, does not mean we need to extend it far outside of this neighborhood, but it does mean that we need to do that.
And, and just to be clear, so it's purple means it's currently NRP.
Right, but would need to change in some way, right. The, uh, I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna go over to blue next. Blue, I drew a circles and there's some different parts of the city. Pardon me? Sure. I will go to green next. There are two colors of green on the map. The dark green represents areas that are existing or soon to be city parks. So I drew this one here, which is Hubbard Park. In fact, this is natural resource protection. This is natural resource protection. Our recommendation would probably to turn that entirely into a parks district because that's what we do with our parks. This will become a city park in the not too distant future that's approved as part of the Spear Meadows neighborhood. And the city acquired this piece, which is in the Rye neighborhood as city park. So they can come out of the neighborhood residential areas and become parks because that's what they are. Um, the light green, which again will make more sense when I start to show some other layers with it, are areas that are currently zoned as neighborhood residential areas, but functionally are, there is no development to be done on them. So the two right-hand ones here, that's the Auckland that we just spoke about, they have been permanently conserved. And the reason that there's this gap between them is that the middle part was already natural resource protection. The left-hand one here, this is a parcel of land that is, has multiple layers of regulatory restrictions on it. So it is the, uh, it pulled the density, or it is the, it was a non-contiguous planned unit development. So the density from this area was used to create Dorset Farms. Further, as part of their Act 250, the, uh, the area here was designated as open space for this property. And about six or seven years ago, the owners, the then owners of this property inquired with Act 250 of whether this could be relocated somewhere. And Act 250 said, no, that is the Still Club Highlands. You can't change permit restrictions. So for all intents and purposes, um, at least at this stage, we feel that that could be shifted over to the natural resource protection district and to Kelsey's point from before, be more clear about what, um, what our objectives are.
Is that part of?
Regulations are saying.
Is that part of what's NRT?
It is currently in the NRT, natural resource transition, which is a peculiar district. Uh, I'm gonna jump to blue and then I'll do orange last. So blue are the properties, and we have a lot of data behind this that I will show bits of in a little bit here. Blue represent parcels where more than 70% of the parcel is in a habitat block and other natural resources. For our current regulations, if your property is more than 70% habitat block, then you're allowed to build on 30% of it so as to not create a takings. To Kelsey's point from before, that is currently a floating 30%, and that could be problematic under Act 47 because we're gonna have to designate an area that is served by water and sewer. If the district is floating, that could arguably say the entire property should be. So we went through, we did an exercise. I'll show you the, the data behind it in a minute. But we identified a series of parcels that are not publicly owned where it most likely, in order to achieve the objectives that you set out to achieve enveloping this plan and the past, past regulations, would be to assign that 30%. So, uh, this is the Iceman property off Dorset Street. There's a couple of UVM properties up here. There's a couple down by the lake where there's a habitat block, one off Allen Road. And then, um, a handful owned by either UVM or the Windjammer or a property up behind the airport. In each of these cases, this blue dot doesn't necessarily represent an exact geography, but it is sort of visually either 30% or, uh, the closest we can get before you get into a hazard like a wetland or a flood plain where they wouldn't be able to build in regards. The last piece of the puzzle, and then we'll show some other layers, is, Q? The last piece of the puzzle is we talked about habitat blocks. The other component that will need some tweaks are your conservation PUDs. So the conservation PUDs, as you know, are a tool in the zoning. In some parts of the city, they're an option. In some parts of the city, they're mandatory. Um, so in the southeast quadrant, in all the districts other than the village ones and obviously the NRP, it is mandatory to be a conservation PUD if you have more than four acres of land. There are, and I'll show this in a map in a few minutes, there's maybe a dozen or 15 properties where it's mandatory to be a conservation PUD. In looking at the legislation of Act 47 and the intent behind it, the, we, we think that the, that the tool that sets 70% as a hard number is a little bit of a blunt instrument. It doesn't really take into account the context of what's around it. So in some cases, it might make sense to be over 70%. In some cases, especially in the light of Act 47, if the area of the property is surrounded by areas served by water and sewer, and there's no regulated natural resources on the property, there's no habitat blocks, there's no uh, wetlands or stream buffers, it is likely, would be challenging to argue that it must be 70% conserved in those instances. On the other hand, there are some properties where the property is up against the boundary of, let's say, the NRP and it's, it, it's on the boundary of being served by water and sewer. And so you may have a policy call to make about where do you want to draw the lines? Do you want to expand the NRP to include a larger area? The one that we flagged for that is this orange one, South Butler Farms. It's a fairly large property, 40 or so acres. Currently required to be a conservation PUD. Um, and about 20% of the property is in the NRP right now. So that's the broad overview. I'm now gonna go into some specifics of showing the background to this. Um, I'll pause here. Michael?
I had a question. Earlier on, you said that if, if a habitat block has 70%, more than 70% is habitat block, 30% can be developed. And then you said that, that 30% must be served by sewer and water. Why is that?
I didn't mean to say that it must be served. When there is sewer and water adjacent to it, then it would, it would be, if sewer and water goes immediately next to the property and the property under our current regulations allows for 30% of it to be built upon, it is likely a good match to reassign that 30% and this is the council discussion, but to assign water and sewer to that area in order to make sure that we are not, that we are not creating a potential takings, I guess, is where it comes down to. It is case by case. So if it's in an area like off Cheese Factory Road where there's no water and sewer anywhere near it, then that's not applicable. It's really about where it's immediately adjacent to it.
Um, if it doesn't show any green or any color on a lot, then what does that mean?
So this map right now is just showing changes. So it means that we're not at this point recommending a change to the, to the zoning maps. Not modifying the habitat block, not, not modifying the NRP, that kind of thing. I think this will come a lot more clear when I start to show the other layers with it because I, I sort of showed this intentionally without everything else because it gets very crowded quickly. So let me put on some other layers here unless anybody else has a early conversation, early item. So I'm gonna throw on here, first is the natural resource protection district. So this starts to make a little bit more sense about these properties here. They're surrounded, they're conserved. And then I'm gonna put on the habitat blocks. And what you're gonna see here is there are some properties like this one here where the entirety of the par, property is covered in a habitat block, and that's where we identify. And that's where we identified this thirty percent potential challenge. Um, we also have data where I actually, I can actually pull out exactly where that thirty, whi- which those parcels are. But I'm just sort of showing together. The areas, generally speaking, the yellow and the green in this are the areas that are most likely to be. Remaining not served by sewer in the future. They're where your policy says, we don't wanna see development. That's, there, there's a few others like large floodplain areas, but this is generally them.
Paul?
Yes.
Does the thirty percent have to be in one place or can it be two bits of fifteen percent each or three of ten? Depending on the topography?
There's not a, there's not necessarily a strict, so in the current LDRs, there's not necessarily a strict requirement that it be. One contiguous piece, but it's a pretty heavy preference. Um, I would say you'd have to have a really good reason, like there's a stream running straight through the middle. And so you put it on the two corners or something to, to split it up. Um, the other is considering sort of density of infrastructure. You wouldn't want to be sort of putting two roads and two curb cuts when one would do into a development area, things like that. So I think the very heavy preference, if not necessarily the strict regulation, would be a single thirty percent.
No, I was just thinking of location of hazards you might have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Divide it up.
Yep.
Okay.
Um. Okay, can I keep going? Okay, um, so this is the habitat blocks. Um, I can show a layer, I'm just gonna pop it on and then I'm gonna take it right off just to show you. That um, the work that we did to analyze this was. These orange ones, these are all the parcels in the city where there's at least seventy percent habitat block and or other um hazards on it. Um, Kelsey and I then went sort of one by one through each of these to remove them where they weren't relevant. So this is Red Rocks Park. We don't have to meet a thirty percent for that one. This is South Village. This is the association land that was left over from the neighborhood. Um, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's how we got down to these ones, the blue dots. It is possible that as we go through the remaining work here, we identify a couple more. Um, but generally speaking, um, it's only the ones, the blue dots where there was. We found a um subject that we need to be really mindful of. Um, the other half of what we spoke about is again, the conservation um PUDs. So. This map here shows all the areas of the city. Um, where conservation PUDs are either an option or a mandatory. They're mandatory in the green um for any parcel over four acres. So what we did with that is we popped it down to these little green dots. And these little green dots represent parcels more than four acres. So if these properties were to be developed, other than the two acre carve out that you allow for. They would be required to be a, um, a conservation PUD. Similar to the last exercise, we then went through one by one and looked at these and um. Sort of identified what would our professional recommendation be to you about where you uh, what tool you deploy? So in this instance here, I'm gonna pick on this property right here. This is just off Wildflower Lane. It's about a six acre, seven acre parcel um that has a single family house on it. Um, there is water and sewer immediately to the east, south. And I believe it, I'm not sure if it's on these two homes, but certainly they're able to connect to it if they choose. Um, and then of course Heinsberg Road has water and sewer. The intent of Act forty seven, I think, would be that this is an area that would be able to be built upon. Other than any uh hazards, habitat blocks, et cetera on the property. So we think that this is an example of a property where uh, the. Tool of a conservation PUD is probably not applicable. Um, and instead, uh. Or at least the conservation PUD with the mandatory seventy percent conservation. It could still be a conservation PUD without a number associated with it. Um, and we can get into that in a little bit where in this property, the, perhaps the best outcome is that it is allowed to be built at the five units an acre. However, the other tools that you have brought in that require ten to fifteen percent of the property to be. A park space or an open space, could be public or private, is, is maintained. And if there happen to be any wetland buffers, things like that, they have to be still carried forward. There's a handful of properties like this, that's one of them. There's a couple right here off Heinsberg Road next to the um Butler Farms that are sort of in the same situation. Um, there's a couple off um Spear Street. Um, this one, for instance, is surround, this is Spear Meadows um being constructed right next to it. So this one's gonna have um development on three sides of it. Um, but it also has a river corridor and or wetlands right there. So those would definitely become protected regardless.
And the parcel immediately to the south is a park.
Is a park, right. Um. By contrast, so, so that's one case study we came across. A different case study that we came across is these four parcels right here. So in these ones, the city has already drawn a line of the natural resource protection district. So your NRP district comes right through the back half of this property. That is also where your. Wetlands are, including the buffers. So that, those little squiggly lines, those are the wetlands plus the hundred foot buffers. So you, our prior versions of, of all of us drew this line of the, of the NRP. Um. Our recommendation in a, in places like this would be that the conservation PUD not have the mandatory seventy thirty split. But it could still have the mandatory conservation associated with any part that's in the NRP. So if, for whatever reason, this uh property were to be developed, which is, has a whole bunch of reasons why it may not be that are unrelated to our zoning. But uh, if it were, then a, a conservation PUD could still exist, could still mandate that it be permanently conserved on the rear portion. Because it's in the NRP, but not from an arbitrary seventy percent. You could choose if you want to also pull that line forward. If you felt that from a policy perspective, you wanted to get closer to the seventy percent. Um, you know, I think that at some point you start to get pretty close to where are these, where there's actual development there. Um, like whatever, you know, um tennis court or wherever that might be there. That's really your call about um, is it a valuable policy exercise to move the line or not move the line? Yeah.
If that line was moved and that little thing, it might be a tennis court. If it ended up inside the NRP, would your grandfather just stay there?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I didn't mention earlier, um, in areas that are, speaking of um pre-existing areas. Uh, this whole stretch of Summerfield is in the NRP, but it was um. It, it was approved prior to the zoning coming in. As a cleanup matter, we may recommend to you to take them out of the NRP, even though it looks nice to show. This big NRP connection, it's not reality of what's on the ground. Um, but that's a little bit of an aside from today. Um, other properties, um. Uh, we spoke about um. That there are already um restrictions on the property. And then, and then the last one that I really wanted to flag of in terms of case studies is this one here. Whereas I mentioned, the NRP represents ten or fifteen, twenty percent of the property over here. Um, there's a wetland over here. You could choose to say, you know, we were trying to achieve something a little bit policy based with our um. With our NRP district, maybe this is an appropriate area to um widen that um. Wildlife corridor a little bit or potential wildlife corridor a little bit or, or capture the wetland in there. Um, which is shown as being this scale because it's been farmed um for a long time. But if left fallow, it might become a little bit bigger. You could have a policy discussion of saying, should that area be added to the NRP and therefore not in a sewer service? The difference between this one and the ones we were talking about earlier is that it's contiguous to other areas that are already planned for having no. Development and no water sewer service. I think that's my tour. Did I miss anything? Oh, yeah. Um, this is getting a little bit into the specifics here, but we did identify a couple of properties where the. There's some need to be a little bit um more clear on the overall policy intent. So here, this is the Baldup property. You see, there's a big wetland that crosses over here. The NRP sort of skirts around part of the property. And then if we go and we look at the habitat block, the habitat block covers essentially the rest of the property. So it's creating sort of a, a little bit of um lack of clarity to the owners about. Where's the city allowing the limited amount of development that should be allowed? The, the logical place would be off the end of this road that was built because the wetland is the highest level of importance. Um, so we might suggest that that's an area that we wanna do a little bit of tweaking of boundaries to make sure that we're. Consistent with Act forty seven, which this, you know, water and sewer comes right here, so it is served by it.
And just as a reminder, it was in my, it was in the memo, but part of this is because of the higher densities that are allowed under S one hundred, Act forty seven. Um, that in the current LDRs, there's a maximum of six units an acre from shifting density around and moving stuff around under a conservation PUD. Like that's the max you can achieve by using all these tools. Under S one hundred, you effectively get that anyway. So if you then allowed a conservation PUD that uh kept any of the density shifting or any of these other parts of that PUD structure. Um, you could effect, effectively, the goal of all of this is not to reduce or increase the amount of density that is allowed or intended. In some of these lower scale residential areas that we're talking about. It's to keep it so that it's consistent with what you wanted to do before, but also in a way that's um compliant with Act forty seven.
So both, both things apply then, maximum of six, but allowed set five.
Um, so the maximum, the, the allowed. The five is the state saying this is the minimum maximum that a s- a city can say. You, a city can't set a maximum any lower than five.
No, it's, you're allowed, allowed up to five.
By, by right under the state law.
Yes.
You're not forced to build five, but you are allowed to.
Yes, exactly. So, so the point, point being is when we're talking about, you know, changing the boundaries of the NRP or, or changing the PUD system or um. Making things compliant with Act forty seven, the intention is to end up with the development in the most logical places on properties. In a way that is both aligning with the, your policy intentions from the previous version of the LDRs and all of your discussions in IZ. And the city plan and the future land use map and the state law as it stands today. So it's putting all those things together and you end up with, with these kinds of decisions that we have to make about individual lines.
And then just to add just one sentence to that, uh, part of the. Way in which the mechanism of the current conservation PUD that you have seventy percent mandatory conservation, thirty percent development. Part of how that is passes muster is that you're shifting the density from the seventy to the thirty. Um, if you shifted, you, you're already essentially getting under Act forty seven, the results of. What the shifting would have done before. Um, the only other way to do it and retain that would be to allow the, the, the thirty percent to be instead of. Five or six or seven units an acre, fifteen or twenty or something like that units an acre, which. You know, we pretty quickly dismissed as not being the intent of the policy here. So we didn't really go down that route, but that theoretically is, is a, is a, is a path. We just don't think that that's consistent with either any of the work that you've done in the last decade or the new city plan. So we just wanted to sort of flag that as, that's when Kelsey speaks about some of the tools might need to change. But we're really focused on outcomes. This is a really prime example of that. Okay. Whoever you wanna have.
I think it was Fran and Montana.
So I guess my question is that uh on specific properties, is, did, do you see this being addressed? Um, uh, by changing the map or by changing the verbiage in the LDR?
Um, it would, it would be the map. Um, well, actually it would be both. So the map would say like where on each property the land, the line is between the NRP and the. Development area, which would likely be in the, what I've been shorthanding as the one low, low scale residential district. Um. But also all of, a lot of the language in the conservation PUD would have to be changed. A lot of the language or a good chunk of language in the habitat block would have to be changed because it's, it's the same thing. Like you wouldn't have that.
Just that section that talks about the thirty percent.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's not, yeah.
Well, a, a chunk then of, of language. So. A lot of the conservation PUD would have to be kind of reworked and a little bit of the habitat block about. The designation of where the development area is and how do you choose it and all of that? That stuff would be, would be cut out because it would just be, the habitat block is here and the development area is here.
We still think that you could retain, and this is getting a little detailed, but within the habitat block. One of the tools that you created was the ability to do an even exchange. We think that that can still be kept. Um, we'll have to do a little bit of the, basically what we're, what we've been looking at is that. If you exchange two acres here for two acres there through a DRB process, you'd still be allowed to do it. If the DRB accepts it, then we'd have a mechanism where the council would do a modification to the sewer service area to reflect that. It's a little bit um clunky, but we are pretty confident that that's, that's, there, there's a. There's a clear process by, by which it happens that we think can meet muster on that.
I would also say, um, just to flag, and I think it was sort of raised tangentially before. There are definitely properties in the city that are seventy percent habitat block or ha- or resources or hazards or whatever. Or more that we are not recommending have water and sewer service area. I think Michael sort of alluded to this a little bit. Um, there are specifically a few properties that have both almost full coverage of habitat block and full, if not full coverage of NRP. Um, and we would say that that would be something where the NRP rules of a, a single. Um, a one home or a duplex or three homes or three duplexes or a triplex. Um, would be allowed, it'd be those NRP rules that would, would apply because it wouldn't be in the water and sewer service area. So the state statute that requires that five units an acre wouldn't apply. So there's, there's a couple of those sprinkled through the city. I just didn't want anyone to think like we're, you know, drawing arbitrary thirty percents in, you know, properties that are fully landlocked. Or, or otherwise, you know, fully covered in wetlands or something like that.
Or out, way outside of our water and sewer.
Or, or very far from the water and sewer service area. Yep.
So is NRP and habitat blocks, you, you seem to be using them interchangeably.
No, they're two different things.
Yeah.
So just, the NRP.
Which is which?
The NRP is a zoning district, so it's, it's, it's the SEQ NRP. Um, so it is along, it's. You can't have NRP in any other zoning district, like you couldn't be NRP and, you know, R four or R one or whatever it is. Um, the habitat block is an overlay district.
Okay.
So the, the NRP is older. Um, it is generally bigger, it is often more contiguous. Um, the habitat blocks came out of the last IZ process as the result of um a report from Arrowood. And sort of where are actual trees and habitat areas and, and other things on the ground that should be protected? There are a lot of places where they are coincident, but the NRP also includes a lot of wetlands. A lot of um river corridors and stream corridors and things like that and sort of areas that fill out in between all of those resources.
Does it include like outcroppings of um like? Well, rock outcroppings and things like that, because there's, you know, very specific places where that occurs. And I've always wondered if, you know, are we just saying, no, you can bulldoze that? Or that's a nat- is that a naturally occurring?
Steep slopes are regulated, um, and that's.
Aren't necessarily steep slopes, they are often at the tops of hills.
I guess I would say, Donna, that the NRP is a combination of um fr- from two thousand four, two thousand five. Uh, a combination of identified um wildlife corridors. Um, of agricultural lands, um, of um resources like wetlands. Um, that was influenced by a breeding birds habitat study at the time also.
So it's forests? So it's forest?
Uh, it's often forested. Um, because that's a, 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 a habitat area often. And then, as Kelsey alluded to, connections between them. It's a landscape level um, rather than a site specific level. Like if you look at the lines here, they're, they're, they're sort of
Mm-hmm.
s- swooping lines. They're not, you know, let's go around this resource line.
Mm-hmm. And the N R P is also some, like, it's, it's on the same level as like the industrial and open space district or the mixed I C or airport. Like, it's a district that is, it shows up in the use tables. It's, it's, it's that sort of puzzle piece in the, the zoning district citywide. The habitat blocks, I think importantly, sits on top of that level of puzzle pieces. So you can have habitat block that is currently in an R four district and that's totally fine. But you can't have N R P in the same place. There is no N R P in Queen City Park or um, you know, the C one R twelve. Because they don't, you have to be, it's that level of district.
We did explore the possibility of collapsing, collapsing them into being a singular, call it some third word. Um, that's still in the realm of the possible, but we, there is some value, at least in the S E Q of having the two of them over one another because for the very limited amount of development that's allowed in the N R P, um, one home, if you have fewer than fifteen acres or um, three homes, if you have more than fifteen acres, the habitat block gives guidance as to where to not build that home. So there is some value to it. So if you were, um, say, this property here, I'm just making one up. I, I know that one has a home on it, but if it didn't, it would be saying, you know, build here, build that, those three homes here, not here. So there is some usefulness as to um prioritizing within it. Um, it is a little bit clunky that there is both, but um.
I think in this discussion, there's been a little bit of talking about both together because they're kind of a main indicator of where we're not generally talking about having water and sewers. I think that's maybe why.
Right. That's a unifier is that broadly speaking, um, we would recommend that these areas in both of these colors be the areas planned for not having water and sewer with the exceptions of what we just talked about.
Just as a final point of background, the other thing is the S E Q for a very long time has been treated as a separate thing from the rest of the city. Um, so then the N R P is S E Q N R P, so it's only in the southeast quadrant. Where the habitat blocks, because they're, they're citywide and they're going based on resources, they appear anywhere in the city where that kind of um, habitat, forest, shrublands, whatever, um, underlies the the habitat block occurs. So you can see in this map, there's only the green in sort of the bottom right corner. There's yellow kind of everywhere. Everywhere else. In addition to the bottom corner.
Michael, were you trying to? Oh, and then Paul will get you. I, I just called on Michael.
I just want to know, uh, on the exchange for, uh, in the habitat block, I, I've always had a, a, a problem with it. Are we going to revisit that? Because it's, you can exchange land on the map. But you can't move what lives there. So I've always had a problem that this is not a really practical solution to uh, to the, the problem we were trying to solve. Because you can, you can move the lines on the map, but you can't move what's on the ground. Who lives there? What lives there?
You are certainly welcome to, to have further discussion and it, there are standards that indicate that how, how somebody, what they have to do to the land that is being exchanged, if it's not forested, what they need to be doing, but you can certainly revisit it. Um, I think the tool was intended to account for the fact that the, the, the lines are policy based lines. Um, Arrowood did the study. They did it. They drew a line and the commission said, let's accept that line. Um, where that meets the practicality on the ground for an individual developer, if there's a little thing that jogs out. Um, I think that the, the intent of the tool was to give a little bit of flexibility and also, I think, protect the city um, a little bit from uh, our, arguments that of legal arguments essentially.
Yeah.
Um, but certainly we can revisit more.
Yeah. And I guess the other difference is something like there, you can't, they can't have their own, their own expert go out and field delineate a habitat block. As Paul said, it's a policy based line where if it was something like a wetland, you, they could say like, this is actually where the wetland is. And so this is actually where the buffer is, where the habitat block is, is policy based. So on a parcel by parcel basis, there could be a spot where, you know, realistically, the, the habitat is twenty feet this way. Instead of here, it's over there. And so moving the line may actually not involve moving anything on the ground of actual habitat. It may, but it may not. It may just be sort of doing the exchange to do a, a tiny bit of that. That's actually the habitat. This is actually good development land and, and sort of adjusting as they go.
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, Mike. I think um, I was concerned about what, e- exactly what you're saying. Are we giving up good habitat? But I think ultimately we'd probably wind up with the stuff that's makes more sense for development to be kind of. Um, Paul?
Yeah, I was wondering um, if we should um revisit um, the Arrowood uh, report and see if there are changes that we made in the Arrowood report that we wouldn't have had to make um, under um, forty seven and one hundred. And I wondered if the staff did that in preparing this. And um, if there are changes that we could make now.
So, um, Paul, we're, we're happy to go back over that. I know some commissioners are, are new from, from that time. And so we're happy to look back to it. My recollection is that there are about three or four areas of the city where the commission adjusted the habitat block from the original report. Um, one of them was where South Village exists because they didn't catch that part of it was being built on. Um, and then there were three others, um, where the um, commission makeup, made a policy based choice, certainly. We didn't specifically look at it here. Um, but we're happy to pull that up for if the commission wants to talk about it. Um.
Yeah, I think we had given staff the, the general guidance to try to keep, keep our, keep whatever we're doing as close to the current policy as made sense. So, so that wasn't so far something we've asked them to do.
I always thought the property at Heinsberg Road, um, that we had a significant impact on that. That was quite different than with the Arrowood report uh, had a, had, had shown us. Of course, I understand it's a whole different world there now. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, anything else on?
I guess.
You have some more?
So we, we have tons more layers that we could talk about, but I guess our, our big question at, at this stage is obviously you haven't seen any language. You're just seeing this uh, through this quick walkthrough, but are we broadly on the right track with what we're looking at to where you might want to spend some more time on it?
Yeah, Larry, you want to?
I have one quick question. Um. The policy lines on a map for the resource protection uh, or the N R P zone. Um, sounds a little arbitrary in places. And is there a way to look at some of these specific areas? This is where we've arbitrarily put this policy line. This is what's actually happening and it makes sense to make some adjustments so that the policy decision reflects what's really important. Or am I missing something?
No, I, I don't. Guess, I, I mean, just to say, I mean, so Paul, so the N R P, although it's not new, um, twenty years ago, there was a very large study done. They looked at what was on the ground. They looked at what the habitat was. They looked at where the animals were and that's what, when, where the lines were drawn. So, so it wasn't totally arbitrary. Like, it was actually based on scientists going out, looking at the land, looking at what was there, looking at the mapping, looking at, you know, a- all of that. So I don't think we can say the N R P is arbitrary. I think it might not be new or it might not exactly reflect what's on the ground in this moment, but it was based on like a scientific study. So.
No, I totally understand that, but Kelsey was saying that some of the, some of the boundaries on the map were done on a policy basis.
Hmm.
As opposed to what is on, on the ground and.
For habitat blocks.
For habitat blocks.
Yeah, not for enough.
Yeah, for the habitat blocks. And, and I was just wondering if, if it's done for a policy basis, but it's actually a natural, uh, I mean, a habitat block, does it make sense to, to revisit some of those areas? And to.
So I guess.
To see if they align with what's really happening on the ground.
So like, for example, one of the policies was, okay, this is a spot where we're adopting a conservation P U D.
Mm-hmm.
We know the conservation P U D is gonna allow thirty percent of the parcel to be developed. Why don't we just draw the line? So we're saying the thirty percent to be developed is us making that decision. Because we're looking at the map. We know we're gonna give them thirty percent. Why don't we just draw the line at thirty percent? And it was in line with the development above it and below it. It just, it was a policy decision, but it made sense with what we were gonna otherwise let them pick later, you know, so.
Okay.
I think in the case of the polit- it's policy decision, like that's like and kind of how that discussion.
And I guess I would add for the, for the habitat blocks, um, when, when we use the word policy decision, um, what I think we mean is Arrowood Environmental did a um, analysis um, of where they would draw a line. Um, that is, uh, the city then, the planning commission, the city council then adopted those with a, a couple of areas where they were trimmed back due to other policy considerations. Um, but they didn't expand from it. There is another way of looking at natural resources where you say the resource is regulated regardless of whether it's mapped or not. And that's how things like wetlands are done.
Mm-hmm.
And a professional goes out and identifies the boundary of it. The reason in this case that the commission decided to accept the largely the, the habitat blocks as drawn by um, by Arrowood and essentially make an overlay zoning district out of it is that there is seventy, eighty years of case law all around the country about how do you delineate where the edge of a wetland is, identifying where the edge of a habitat block is could wind up with um, just being over and over and over all the way up to the Supreme Court with neighbors saying, no, no, it goes all the way over here. And the developer saying, no, no, there's, it doesn't go anywhere near here. And rather than being through that, drawing a zoning district boundary essentially of saying, this is where we have decided it is, was the tool that the commission and, and council felt was um, best protecting everybody's interests.
And I, I don't, I don't mean this, it's gonna sound facetious when I say it, but I don't mean it to be. But wetlands are sort of squiggly when you look at them on a map and, but that is because of the value of the soil that is situated right there under the squiggles. The intention of a forest block or a habitat block or a conservation district, there's a significant amount, amount of the value in those things in being block shaped. So, so sometimes it may be that this square foot is not as good of a habitat as that square foot. But this one makes, is, is contiguous with a block of a bunch of stuff next to it. So it's a little bit of a different science of, of habitat blocks being big chunks of land and that are a certain, you know, shape instead of being all fingers like wetlands often are. Um, where wetlands, there's value in, in smaller pieces and squiggly pieces and sort of disconnected pieces. And it's a little bit different in, in how it works. So some things it may not be like tree by tree. This is a good spot. That's a bad spot. It, it, there is some value in, in making those a little bit of a smoother shape.
Duncan?
Thank you. That's helpful. Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to um, get some clarity on the process. I know we talked about it the other day. Um, so for instance, the blue dots. Those are properties that are over seventy percent hazard. Um, you, actually, that U V M one, um, the U V M one, is it the other one property? Maybe he's as.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, so the process would be that we would look at that property and we would say, okay, based on it's the section right on Spear Street, based on the topography and the hazards in the other part of the property, we would delineate where that thirty percent was. We would draw a line exactly saying this is where if this is ever developed, that this is exactly where that could happen.
Yeah, so.
Yes, with the exception that in all zoning districts, um, the D R B always has the authority to modify boundaries by fifty feet, one way or the other, to account for exact is almost never so exact, right? Like there's, there's a reason why.
But essentially, we, we're removing the floating component.
Correct.
We are saying, so for each of these properties, we were saying, this is the thirty percent. This is where it can happen.
So for example, on that property, um, Paul just added a couple more layers of stream buffers and wat- wetlands and things. The blue dot is approximately where, it's not the shape or size that it would be, but that's sort of, it was put in that corner intentionally because it's sort of uphill from those wetlands and streams. There's also, if the land kind of falls away, it's a bit of a slope going down to those wetlands. So that was the very rough cut of like, this is the approximate corner that we would recommend as being that most developable area.
Slash least impactful for natural resources.
Whichever way.
Back over here.
This process would be done with each of these properties.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, right. And, you know, it's, when we started into this, we thought, oh, wow, that's a massive project. But we were, I think, we, we were pretty happy to be able to see that when we actually applied all this data to it, it's really not that many. You know, it's, it's.
Seven, eight.
It's, it's not, right.
Do people have questions about that process or want to zoom into some other? I mean, that was, I think, a really telling zoom in when you put on the rivers and the wetlands. Like, like, do we? Kind of answered my question. Like, see a few more of those and see if we like the general approach or let staff kind of turn these blue dots into something a little more you know, what, you know, exact maybe?
So, so looking, for example, this is a property, it's a five acre parcel off the end of Lakeview Lane, um, which comes off Bartlett Bay Road. It happens to be entirely in a habitat block. Um, their access is off the end of Lakeview Lane is the only way to get into the property. So there is one place and there's water and sewer in multiple places around it. There's one place where it is the logical place to put, to allow for a small amount of development. Um, so I'll, we found that for the most part, these were fairly straightforward. Um, I'm sure that we will come back to with a couple of edge cases where we say, hmm, there's competing, competing interests here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, I, similarly, um, we looked at this property back here. This is behind the Windjammer. Um, looking at all the different resources that are here. Um, the story sort of tells itself about where on this property, um, it makes sense to allow anything. And it's really, in order to sort of maintain this, this thirty percent, it's really just this little bit right here.
Hmm.
Because back over on the other side, it's either gets very steep and also I guess we would probably advocate that this is the only place where there could be a wildlife connection back over sort of behind the landfill. So we wouldn't want to advocate for that spot. Um, similarly, over here where the, the, the old informal dog park was off Patching Road, uh, there's the potential of connecting um, habitat crossing over here. It's very steep behind here. Uh, anything back here is, you know, drops off like a cliff. So the only appropriate place is really over here, right up against the interstate.
So I guess what I was getting at is, um, so are people comfortable with the general approach they've laid out? So they could kind of work up a more formal map for us to look at? Or are there more questions or?
Might be good to have, um, um, might help with Duncan's question to have a map where we can have the blue dots and um, hazards. So but I think you already looked at that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Located these blue dots. I mean, obviously on that U V M property, that is the highest point in the whole place of heard rather well.
Are you comfortable with them um, formalizing the dots into a, a, a draft map? So it's not a dot anymore. It's, it's kind of closer to the thirty percent or, you know,
Yeah.
Before we look at it again, then maybe we could overlay it with the hazards to just be like, yeah, you know, that makes the most sense, like. Before we look at it again, then maybe we could overlay it with the hazards to just be like, yeah, you know, that makes the most sense, like.
As we've zoomed in and out and look at, looked at the way you guys have analyzed the data, it's pretty impressive. And, uh. Say thank you on that. And it makes sense. The presentation has really helped make sense of, of what's going on. So I totally agree.
Um, Paul, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I guess, um, I'd like to, um, see a bottom line of what we gain and what we lose.
Sure. Okay, um, as in. Um, I don't know that we're gaining or losing much of anything if, if the general idea is to keep it.
We're happy to do that though. We were sort of contemplating whether that would be useful for your meeting because if there are areas like. These parcels right in the middle that we flagged before where if your conservation P U D doesn't mandate seventy percent, maybe these ones are only fifty percent. So there is a little bit of a reduction there. On the other hand, you've got these three areas over here that are being added into N R P and. Um, uh, that. Our instinct is that it's gonna be pretty much a wash. And if it is tipped a little bit in the direction of, um, of areas allowed, it's probably just reflecting reality. More than anything else, like these purple are what they are regardless of what the zoning says. So it's, you know, we could put it on one side of the ledger, but that might. It's, it's, that's, that's, how's it gonna be there regardless of whatever we do, so.
Oh, do you think it would be appropriate to do like almost three categories? Like one, it's just. Literally a change to reflect what's on the ground currently, like the purple would maybe be one category and then. Really, how do you, how do you picture, you, you just leave it up to staff how to? Show that.
Um, to me?
Yeah. Do you have a suggestion about how you wanna see it?
Um, I just was thinking of it as a kind of a, um, yardstick or perimeter as we went along. To track things.
Yeah, I think that'll be helpful for public outreach too, to be able to be able to show and then to the council to show what the changes look like.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanna make sure it's totally clear that the habitat block adjustments, um, the intention is just fixing. In a, in a location what would have been allowed anyway, so that's really a net, there's nothing changed. Um, but it, there could be a little bit of wiggling with these, these little pieces that really have to change one way or the other. Um, and potentially, as Paul said, things about the conservation P U Ds being maybe a little more development area or, or whatever it is. Based on the, the logic of the site.
I guess that's kind of what I meant by having three colors, like with the middle color being ones that. Either it's already like that on the ground and it's not a change. And if the habitat block stayed at exactly thirty percent, that's also not a change. But like Paul gave the example where the habitat block might be fifty percent instead of seventy. For, you know, that kind of a, maybe that.
We can take a shot at it.
You know, if there's no change, that's, you know, that's good too.
I'm not usually accused of having too few columns in my data sheets, so. Prefer to do it once than to have to go back and do it again, so, yeah. Okay, um, so now that that is crystal clear, super simple, nothing complicated in any of that conversation. T D Rs?
Okay, so I'm taking over here, I think. So for T D Rs, I have been. Dreading like crazy talking about T D Rs and have, I mean, I always hate talking about T D Rs. I feel like it's so complicated. Um, but I really, I did a lot of thinking about what the T D R program is. And what our goals are and then what these changes mean for it and, um, kind of brainstormed an idea with, um. With Duncan and, and Paul and Kelsey just to see if it was like on track, it might make sense or not. Um, but, so the idea with the T D R program was that it was created to conserve areas where we wanted to conserve land. And then be able to like provide an area for that density or development to be transferred over to, so that was the goal. And, you know, to provide that value to owners. So the whole idea was it's in the southeast quadrant. And you get this one point two units per acre over the whole thing. With the idea on a lot of properties, you have kind of a split where part of the properties in the conservation zone and part of the properties in. The development zone and you can move the density from one part of the property to the other. So in this case, um, you know, as. This new rule, the Act forty seven, um, they're actually like as per right assigning. That amount of density that the T D R program was otherwise transferring from one part of the property for split properties to the other. We're just giving it to them. So it seems like we don't necessarily want the T D R program to continue. On properties in that situation where, um, you know, they would have been able to take density from one part of the property to, to the other. Now we're just gonna basically be giving it to them on the development portion. So it feels to me like there's some portion of properties. That have that kind of split situation where I think the T D Rs could just disappear. Those properties could just be eliminated from the T D R program. Instead of continuing to have T D Rs, we're saying, okay, well, you can do your development on your development piece of land. You're no longer in the T D R program. They already have the density. So it feels like by doing that, it means that we're kind of eliminating the number of T D Rs. So that they still might be viable for those properties that need them, that really need them. The ones where like the whole property is in N R P and habitat blocks and therefore like really need that. To maintain that kind of program to maintain the value, the development value. So, uh, you know, it feels like there might be other properties, like maybe the municipal properties, and I know this might be a radical idea, but. Some of the mun- municipal properties, maybe the city would be willing to like chip into the, the idea of supporting. Um, the conservation goals and, and kind of eliminating T D Rs from some of those properties as well. Um, you know, just to really bolster the viability of those remaining T D Rs where. It really makes sense to continue to have them, so. So I don't know. I mean, I think the idea is, and I, you know, I think we might probably need to like look at some mapping and think about like what the criteria might be. For. You know, when we have to continue allowing to have the T D Rs to provide the value versus, you know, the properties where they're kind of getting their value. Um, through the zoning change of the five units per acre we're giving them, so, you know. So I think there's a little bit of like a numbers analysis to see like what makes sense, like say someone had a ten acre property. If they have three acres, that's developable. Is that enough? Or, you know?
Is that enough when you say?
Like.
To get the density that they want?
Enough to say they have enough developable land where you could do five units an acre. They're out of the program. You know?
What's the, how would you? How would you decide or assess that they, that three acres is enough at five units per acre?
Maybe.
They don't have to do, they could do a lot more than five units per acre if they wanted.
Well, if we're, yeah, so I, I think that's the, the question, like, I don't know exactly. I don't know exactly what the number is or like what the percent of land, but it does feel like. There's some criteria we could come up with, maybe with staff's help to like say. Properties that are split like this in a reasonable way, maybe it's not like a hundred acres in, in R P and one acre and. Developable, that feels like maybe we're not upholding the spirit of the program, but something.
There, there's one, uh, benefit to the internal transfer of, of, uh, density. And that is that the area from which you are transferring the density is the subject of a conservation easement and therefore is protected. Forever, whereas if we do what we're talking about, a future. Planning commission or council could change, change it. So we'll lose, we'll lose the, one of the key benefits of the T D Rs was that. When T D Rs are transferred, the property from which they're separated becomes conserved. It's a subject of a conservation easement held by the city.
Yes.
And it would be a bad thing to give it up if we don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of ties into what Kelsey was saying about maintaining the conservation P U D because it enables that permanent conservation.
Yeah, so the, the, the state enabling statutes for enabling local bylaws are a little bit stronger in the language in the P U D system. Than a normal subdivision, um, to allow for a city to require permanent conservation. So I think properties, Michael, that you're talking about are, would often be the properties that could be subject. Or would be subject to a mandatory P U D, conservation P U D anyway, and so you, you could keep the structure of the conservation P U D. And as I sort of half mentioned before, require permanent conservation of any land that's in the N R P. Um, when the sort of developable side is, comes up for approval. So you could still inclu- you could keep the conservation P U D structure for that purpose of, of still requiring. Permanent conservation of that, of that other land. That doesn't speak to very small properties. Um, but again, it's, it's a balance of, is about the conservation value of a, a very small amount of land, you know. Less than an acre of land versus. The simplicity of the system and, and sort of the value of, of being able to develop on one part of the property and still get additional. Financial value from the other part of the property. It's, there's a lot of, um, moving parts.
It would depend where that little one acre piece is. If it's contiguous to the Great Swamp, for instance, then it has. It has much more con- uh, greater conservation value than if it wasn't contiguous with, uh, with something that's already, um, protected.
Um, Duncan?
Actually, Paul, can you, the properties we looked at the other day. That, that would actually be a really good example. Um, we looked at ones that we talked about removing the T D Rs from and then there was one, I think it was Sarah Dot's property that we. Uses as an example of what to keep, where to keep. And that might be helpful to.
Yeah.
Sure, so I think one of the areas you're speaking about was. One of the areas that you were speaking about Duncan was, um, off Cheese Factory Road. So here, um, it happens to be that the entirety of the parcel is in the, is in the N R P. There could be examples where, where that's not necessarily the case. There is no water, there is no sewer in those areas. Um, on these properties, if they're less than fifteen acres, they can have one home. If they're more than fifteen acres, they can have three. But that's the entirety of their value associated with it. Um, another property might be.
Yeah, so I think the big point there is you're not giving them any sewer and water districts, so therefore they're not being.
They're not exposed to five acres.
They're not.
No.
Yeah.
Those are.
They don't get the benefit of the five units an acre. Arguably, the T D Rs is a manner in which either legally or by, you know, uh. It's a. Working from a policy perspective of, of these landowners for, you know, who may have owned the land recently or for generations.
But tho- those were the type of properties we would looked at keeping the T D Rs on.
Whereas maybe I'll just pick this one at random or one of these ones or, or over there.
The long skinny ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about.
Um, where these ones, there's water and sewer service, this line happens to coincide with a very steep embankment. And then it's also pretty wet back here. Um, and so, you know, that might, those might be examples of areas where if there are. Say three, two or three acres in there, there could be ten homes. Um, under at forty seven in there, that might be an example of a case where there is, there is reasonable. Return on that property for somebody who owns that land. And I think that was some Jessica's thinking.
And that would take those out of the T D R.
They're already getting what they would have gotten from the T D Rs, so there, it's kind of like double dipping if we still give.
No, I, I get that and.
Right, because they would have achieved that ten units before by transferring the T D Rs to that area.
And Kelsey was saying that on those properties, the permanent protection of that back land could still be.
Conservation.
The conservation piece could still happen without the T D Rs.
Yeah.
If it's a conservation P U D, yes.
Required of a conservation P U D. At the moment, I'm not remembering the map exactly right, if that's.
So that.
Think it is, right?
Uh, well, if they have four acres in the white, then they would be mandatory today to be a conservation P U D.
I thought it would four acres altogether.
I think it's four developable acres.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So in that case, Michael, it, it would, like if we kept the P, the conservation P U D structure. Um, we could eliminate the T D Rs, but it would still be a conservation P U D and it would still have the permanent conservation.
One of the things that we're, we're, um, paying.
Before you leave then.
Yeah.
The owner of that property currently believes that he has T D Rs to sell.
Yeah, this would be a change that we need to be talking about with the public. If, if we, if we even think it's a good idea, I'm just.
Um, it, it, it's a problem because I think it's, um. It's kind of a promise that was made when we, when we, um, established this N R P zoning. That, uh, if you, uh, if you, you, you could, you could conserve because you have value in, in the development rights that you can sell.
Well, but he still has even more benefit now because he can put like four times as many units on that land or I don't know how many.
Forty seven gave them that.
Yeah, you know, at the same time, so it's, it's takes away on one hand, but it's giving him something more valuable on the other.
Well, what's, what's the current zoning there?
Currently, this would be S E Q N R and so absent the transfer either internally or externally, it's one point two. However, it's now five.
Yeah.
Well.
So he's, he's gaining.
T D R would have given him. That, that, that was the point that, that was what we just, we decided is if they were getting what the T D R would have given them.
Could you turn on your mic, Duncan?
If, if that is true.
Well, in cases where it's sure, I mean, maybe here that little tiny bit of white land that's not N R P, maybe it's, maybe it's not enough to make. Make it, you know, and even.
Do you know what the, uh, what the acreage is on, in one of those properties?
Yes, they are, they are classic ten acre lots in Vermont, so they're ten point one acres. Just all around the state and we only have a handful of them, but.
Yeah, a quick question on this. Um. If the T D Rs were kept in place. And they were used to sell them to somebody else, so they get gained for selling those T D Rs. Is there a way that that could then reduce the amount of houses that get built on that piece of property? Because of Act one hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, so there, there are other tools that you can consider. You could retain all of the ability of T D Rs to be. Sent from this area. Um, we would still recommend they not be used in this area because to go above what Act forty seven is, it's really changing your intent. From, from the city plan, but you could find, and I, I think it's talked about a little bit in the memo. Um, additional areas where you could create receiving areas, so we don't use them in the commercial industrial district at all. Um, so you could say, you know, the maximum height is thirty five feet in the, um, tech park. You could make it fifty feet and say you can buy T D Rs to do it. Um, that's really a, a decision point for you all to make of what is in the best interest of the city overall. Um, is it to give additional value to these or is it to simplify? If you want a fifty foot tall building in the commercial industrial district, then just the simplest thing is to just allow it rather than to have to pay for it. It's sort of, this is the policy calls that you all need to make.
I would much prefer if these were then designated as sending only. And expand the receiving areas as Paul has described.
So you're saying, so right now, the, I just want to understand, so the, right now, the S E Q. Has many sending areas in the S E Q, like, you know, all the white areas in the S E Q are. Receiving areas.
Yeah, S E Q has both.
Yeah, so, and it was kind of balanced with the idea that the, the green areas would send the density to the white areas, you know, as we're looking at this map. And it was kind of balanced. So what you're saying is you wanna have all the development in the white areas that we anticipated. Receiving from the T D Rs, but then also send the T D Rs to the rest of. receiving from the T D Rs, but then also send the T D Rs to the rest of the city, both.
No. Just one of each. Those ascending areas and the receiving areas are we expand the receiving areas to um not only residential uh uh density increases, but also in industrial and commercial areas. And not only uh residential density, but lot coverage and building height and building bulk. And there are a lot of ways in which T D Rs can be used by developers to to get more out of the land that they're they're building.
We're gonna talk up here for a little bit. Do you?
You end up creating a situation where the landowner, one of those skinny pieces, gets the bonus of Act one hundred, which gives them five units per acre. Plus, they get the sending T D R. So so that is creating a like a a double. Yeah, a double dip. A gift from the state, you mean? Well, it's a gift from somebody. You're you're taking that property and and increasing its value. Okay, I'm just trying to be a landowner, who one of those, and I think I've got um fifty T D Rs to sell at ten thousand dollars each. Um, and so all of a sudden, no, I could build up to five now, but I got no more T D Rs. My my fifty T D Rs have fifty or five hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars is disappeared.
Um, Duncan and then Donna and.
Can I just jump in with a super quick um clarification? Anything that is a hazard does not have T D Rs. So these the skinny properties we're talking about has no T D Rs for any of those sort of aqua colored splotchy bits where, because that's all wetlands. So the only T D Rs that those long skinny properties have are from the sort of olive army green pieces, which is actually very little of a lot of those properties. So just just keeping in mind that it's not the whole property that these would have T D Rs for, it's just the little, it's the pieces that are not other other hazards.
So we'd have to go by property by property.
That's how that's how T D Rs are determined.
That that was a choice that you all.
As to whether you can can use them or not.
So I guess just, you know, to clarify, you know, if you zoom back in one of them or the group of three of them, like there's maybe two acres buildable in the white. And then there's maybe like one or two acres of the olive green that would have been T D Rs. So so see the one Paul's got his cursor on right now, there's two acres that would have been able to a buildable plus two acres of T D Rs. So they would have had about four acres worth of T D Rs. So times one point two, that's about five. So they have about five developable units now. We're gonna give them ten as per right in the white. Because we're just changing the density up to five units an acre and they have two two acres. So in my opinion, when I was looking at that, I was like, okay, well, they could do five now. We're giving them ten. And they could all be duplexes, so we're giving them twenty. Kind of feels like if we don't give them a T D R or two T D Rs to sell, they're way ahead.
Yeah.
You know, so in my opinion, you could eliminate those two T D Rs on that property, have two less. We're trying to have somebody buy somewhere else, and it just like reduces the pressure on the T D R program. Seems pretty reasonable.
You know, maybe on those that particular example, but you know, find a property that has uh a lot of land that's not hazards and and has therefore a fair amount of T D Rs available.
Yes, yeah, and I am with what I was saying. I completely agree. I think there's many properties that should retain all of their T D Rs. Because we're. They're not getting, yeah, that they would be sending because they're not getting like reasonable value from this new zoning change with the Act forty-seven, so. Sorry, Duncan, I.
No, no problem. I I was just gonna say, um Chelsea, didn't you you had talked about getting rid of what you proposed as the new what zone one? Uh, as a receiving area?
Yes.
Yeah, so all all pretty much all the residential.
The lower scale residential, yeah.
Would.
So anything, anything that is currently zoned as any less than four or less.
Our our four or less would
Yeah.
Would lose, so.
Would not be a receiving area for T D Rs.
Okay.
Which is um the almost all the southeast quadrant, if not all of the southeast quadrant, plus all of Spear Street. All of Orchards, all of Mayfair Park, all of Chamberlain, um Bartlett or Barrett Road, like there's a lot of those sorts of areas around the city, yeah.
So I I agree with what Jessica proposed. I know you don't, Michael, but I I think some of these properties are definitely double dipping, and then they are getting, if they are on sewer and water, they are getting five units per acre. Um, but my my point, and I think we talked about this the other day, is on the flip side of that, okay, we've if we eliminate some T D Rs, there will still be properties that should keep the T D Rs.
Yep.
But we need to enhance the T D R market. So we need to look at, you know, how can we expand the market? Yeah, so with.
How they can be used on the other end, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we definitely, that is part and parcel of this conversation.
Right, and that was kind of what I was um trying to get at too, that you know, if you have all these T D Rs, but you've already zoned everything to a high density, you know, you've already you've already put a lot of density uh throughout the city. What are you, what are these T D Rs going to be good for? You know, because I I mean, I'd like to keep it simple and say, you know, um, if, you know, we we should be designed to what we want, you know, not that, you know, you can expand on this um by by purchasing T D Rs because it just may not be appropriate to expand any higher than you already have.
Yeah, so so currently in from the changes that happened with the T D R program last year, last winter or so, um, there is no cap on the amount of T D Rs that can be received in certain areas of the city. That's mostly the higher density, almost exclusively the the much higher density areas like Shelburne Road. Um, but they are still constrained by everything else that regulates a site, all the stormwater, all the civic space, all the, you know, building requirements, everything else. So there is a functional maximum um for each site about, you know, with heights and everything else that could constrain a site.
Yeah.
It's currently one unit to one, sorry, to one unit. Um, so while the T D R program says that there's no maximum, um, there is a practical maximum for each property. And I would just say that I agree generally both from develop the development side, but also from the neighbor side of of having predictability and what's going to be built next to you. Um, what you can build or what will be built next to you um comes from not having tools like T D Rs being able to add things over and above what what may be expected for the base uh zoning district. I don't think that's an issue as much with um when we talked about adding to building coverage or or heights or something for commercial spaces, because I think a person would expect a commercial space as a commercial space and not really notice an extra five percent of lot coverage or something like that. Um, where additional residential units, there's there's a bit of a different visual impact.
And and because the affordable housing is going to give you possibility of an extra floor anyway.
Yes. Right.
Um, Paul, do you have your hand up?
Uh, no, sorry, muted.
Okay, sure.
Take what I take as an example, what's his Rick Dahlstrom's property? Paul, if you could pick it out there. Um, yeah, that one.
I think he's this one.
Yep.
So um, well, there has a darn shame because there's a habitat block on the west of it. Somewhere.
Does that property have sewer or water?
Actually, n- not, because it doesn't have, he he doesn't have um a boundary on the street.
Right, so this would be an example of a property that is um effectively entirely in the N R P. There is a little tiny portion that's not, but that tiny portion is in a wetland, so um, it it's 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 essentially entirely in the N R P. So their current options are are to, if they have, they have more than three acres, they could build three homes in that area.
But it could.
And they could sell T D Rs.
Sell T D Rs.
Right.
And the I don't know, I don't know how much is covered, but I know the whole property is forty-four acres, but.
Boss, they have a right of way across one of these properties, yeah.
Right.
So, Michael, that's a property that we would propose keeping T D Rs for.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make sense.
They're not benefiting from Act forty-seven because they're not on sewer and water.
But I mean, it's just an idea. So actually, I think this is a really great conversation, Michael, totally, really. Because, you know, there's going to be questions from the public. I mean, people own this land and have expectations. So, you know, for us to just be like, oh, we'll just take it away is like, it's not it's not an easy conversation, you know, but trying to figure out, but trying to figure out like who's getting value with this change and who's not and really needs to retain.
And I think, you know, from a bottom line perspective for you to sort of chew on and think about is the T D R program will have to change in some way because the only way it could be retained of having receiving areas in the southeast quadrant would be to weigh up the um allowed density far beyond what you currently allow and what the comprehensive plan calls for. So if you're trying to hold for a similar land use pattern of you know, in the neighborhood of five, six units an acre in the developable areas, there's a bunch of areas that's coming out of T D Rs. Somehow that needs to be accounted for, either by finding additional receiving areas or identifying opportunities to reduce T D Rs like some of Jessica's ideas, whether it's regulatory or city pieces or what have you, or a combination of both. Side note, um, when at the very beginning of the conversation, when we talked about areas like um the Hubbard parcel, some of that is N R P. If you change it to a parks district, that will remove T D R sending areas from the city, which is, you know, that's the city happens to be both a regulatory body and an owner, but that would reduce them a little bit right there.
Um, also, I just wanted the the something that concerns me, um, just in my own sort of opinion about these things is if you have the development that you're intending for the southeast quadrant and for this this one district to be a certain level, and then somebody comes in and is a developer that has the resources to buy five or six T D Rs, and as Paul says, like, maybe it's a base that everybody gets six units an acre, the equivalent of six units an acre, and then someone has the ability to pay a hundred thousand dollars to change that, then you have these weird pockets of much higher density that may be illogically sprinkled just because of where a developer was with deeper pockets was able to buy a piece of property. It may not be logical in some sort of walkable, you know, pedestrian center. It may just be out on some some road by itself. Um, so it it adds a little bit of unpredictability to the whole system instead of being able to predict, like this is where we're putting different levels of development. It it you could end up with a weird sort of speckly development pattern. The other thing is that we do need to, and this is more on my end than on your end at this point, um we do need to change the T D R program anyway because of our our change from units per acre density um zoning to minimum lot size zoning. So currently, it's you're removing units per acre and sending a unit somewhere else. If you're then sending it somewhere where the it's defined by a minimum lot size, not by units per acre, then you have problems. This is my problem. I'm just
But we.
lagging it for you all that that we have.
Use a T D R to reduce the minimum lot size.
Yeah, but that's that's it's a it's a mechanics issue that still has to be sort of figured out, like. Yeah, but it's this, but it's the same thing. If if your neighbor anticipates like, oh, this person, my neighbor can can't do this or that or can do this or that because the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet. And then someone buys five T D Rs and suddenly the minimum lot size is thirty-five hundred square feet. That's a completely different development pattern. It's a different sort of neighborhood expectation of what could be developed in different places. So it's some of those mechanical issues that also need to be ironed out.
Okay, we can take some public comment?
Ryan, would you mind coming up there just so that it's on the recording?
So, um, excuse me, Ryan Doyle, in listening to your discussion, I'm looking for some clarification about the purpose of the T D Rs. Is it is the primary concern that the taking issue and having some type of legal issue for the city with reducing developable land and therefore reducing someone's property value? Or is the primary concern trying to just concentrate development onto a small portion of a lot to preserve the maximum amount for nature? Or something else or and or slash in between?
Well, I guess first off, none of us were here when it was adopted. Or at least none of us were in our current roles, so it's a little bit of speculation as and and looking back as to exactly why, but I think it's a little bit of both.
I think I maybe can answer Ryan's question. It was established when when the N R P zoning was established as a as a quid pro quo. We're gonna zone your land with very limited development possibility, but in exchange, you could sell the development rights as T D Rs to to sell them to somebody who could use them somewhere else. That was the and and I think it was back in two thousand and three, maybe, or even.
It was around then, and you know, it started, it just to go back in history a little bit more. In the nineties, the regulations were set up so that basically there was one point two dwelling units an acre across the entire southeast quadrant. In the mid two thousands, as Michael indicated, the city decided that it should be more clear about where development should occur and where it should not occur. So a significant portion of the land was put into the N R P, but the one point two was capped. And so basically, it rearranged the same total amount of development, saying it should not generally take place in the N R P. Instead, those who own land in the N R P, it can be uh, they can shift their theoretical development potential to the other portions to have concentrated neighborhoods and thus keep a net of the same total amount of development. Over time, that has since evolved to where the planning commission and council have identified some other receiving areas outside of the southeast quadrant, both to um incentivize development where we have our services and also to to Duncan's point of it's not been a super strong market. And then now with Act forty-seven being um uh, put on top of it, that whole idea of one point two units an acre across the whole area is sort of arranged, it's it's not necessarily gone because the habitat blocks and the N R P exist, but it's granted without that shifting taking place, and that's the challenge that you're now in front.
So is some of the debate here if it's even um a valid program to pursue anymore, or if it has to be kept for the legacy of those properties that it might still affect?
Um, I mean, I think I think that this is the first discussion we're having, and I think we need to think about all those things and, you know, why Michael's brought up some of the points he has, because you know, people do own this land. They have had this expectation. So I think it's up to us to be thinking about all those things, like what makes sense, you know. I think Paul outlined a few things that people likely don't expect. People likely don't expect thirty units an acre on the developable portions of the southeast quadrant, which if we kept the T D R program and all the things with Act forty-seven, I mean, you could wind up with something like that, and I think we're all in agreement. That doesn't make sense.
Is there a a map which shows this uh District One?
Um, there was a map in a previous packet. It is, um Is that it?
Yes.
Hey, yes. There it is.
Can we see it? Because that would uh.
So it's um, understanding that these are very bold, bright colors, it's basically the yellow.
Okay.
So it's the yellow is all of the N R P. It is, sorry, all the N R, the V R, the R four, the R, most of the R ones. The neighbor, the 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 lower scale. Also, here's the other thing that it is. Hang on. Looks very similar to your future land use map.
Yep. I like how you color coded them.
The yellow, okay. So most of the yellow actually is going to be R five.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, unless we make some changes to it, but, you know, yeah, yellow would be R five. And I think what Duncan pointed out, that the memo says the yellow this zone one would not be receiving areas. It might be for TDRs.
And though you are, you know, clearly talking about, um, in many areas, there are some undeveloped or under or or very lightly developed properties, much of this area is existing neighborhoods. So, you know, it it brings in Butler Farms and it brings in Pinnacle at Spear, which are neighborhoods not frankly, all that different from the other neighborhoods that were not in the SEQ previously. They just were built in a different era.
Yeah, and as as I think Jessica just alluded to, our previous conversation for the first hour of this meeting is there are a handful of yellow areas down, or not handful, a few yellow areas, especially down south um, with the Aucklear Conservation and that other parcel off of Dorset Street that will become green. Um, and then the potential for for tweaking, um, yeah. So those couple that become green, green at the bottom and then some tweaking of potential green boundaries with setting those, um. The conservation area on conservation PUD parcels and and things like that. So there's, there's some changes to this map. Potentially.
So you're gonna drop, gonna draft some language?
Yep.
I know we haven't given you a hell of a lot.
So I guess, um, I mean, I know I kind of threw out like a big idea about making changes to the TDR program. Like, is it something that like, we want staff to like start to write up for us to talk through more? Or is there like a big pushback on the the a general approach or?
I'm I'm sure that I want legal review as well, right up front, probably.
We will, we will do our best.
Yeah. Do you, I mean, I've alluded to the idea that it might be helpful to have a little bit of like numbers or example properties of like where, like how a cutoff of some kind, like how we make a decision about
Yep.
TDRs to keep.
Yep, we can definitely, um, do that. I I think there's a potential for something in the neighborhood of the thirty percent developable number, making some sense. But that's up for some further discussion, um, as well. As sort of the, as a, as a cutoff for some of these things.
And that's kind of what I was thinking, because what's, um, five divided by one point two, I should four point and six, so, I don't know, maybe there's some kind of ratio and
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Well, um, it sounds like the general objective is sort of is is fairly shared of, you know, wanting to uh, account for these changes that have come and not sort of have twenty-five units an acre in the in the receiving areas. Um, maybe we can play with it a little bit. We might look at to what extent the existence of hazards um, like those skinny long ones, whether ultimately it changes it that much. Um, in those ones, it didn't change it a whole heck of a lot, and other ones that might change it a lot, that might help inform you. Yeah.
A quick thought that I want to throw out, that's a little bit tangential, but it's related to the TDRs. A few meetings ago, we were talking about the property at the north west end of Market Street and changing the zoning there.
Yep.
Um, and when we're looking at doing something like that, the value of that property changes dramatically. And that's done by us making changes to the zoning. Is there a way, just thinking about TDRs and how we adjust development potential by giving that property a tremendous amount of value? Is there a way for the city to be able to use that to incentivize offsetting something that's on a piece of property that we don't want to see developed? So I, and this is a bit of an offset, but
Yeah.
I own a piece of property. It's worth a million bucks. You changed the zoning on me and it's now worth ten million dollars. You just gave me nine billion, nine million bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a way for the city to take benefit from that so that they can say, okay, well, this property over here, we really didn't want to see developed. And it would be a taking to say they can't develop it, but we've given this person this additional value. And is there a way to be able to transfer that to incentivize this person to actually not build on that property where we didn't want to see development? But they have a TDR, I mean, they have a, uh, LDR right to do so.
I think two answers to that initially, and I think we'd be happy to think on it.
One Big question.
No, it's, it's a great question. I think that that is functionally the purpose of TDRs across the country is is to do exactly that kind of thing. In this instance, I think, and in all instances with TDRs, I think the, the the question that comes back to you all is on the receiving area. Um, is the city satisfied if somebody makes the choice not to purchase the TDRs? If they say, I can do I don't know, two stories or twenty units without TDRs and I can do four stories with. Are we equally comfortable if somebody makes the economic decision of not buying the TDRs? Um, in city center, I think that the the the, uh, complexity for you to weigh there is these areas are also a TIF district. And it is the the thing that the city is getting with the uh, getting development to occur in some of these areas is all that revenue that's being um, uh, redirected from the TIF district over the next twenty years. How to balance those things, that's why we have incredible boards to figure out where that line should be.
I just wanted to throw that out because all that is true. And in doing that re- rezoning, there is a tremendous transfer of wealth that happens. And does that happen without having some way to sharing that for the community? If that's my property, I happen to be pretty happy. But is there a, is there a way that 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 increased wealth can be used to the benefit of the community? Just a thought to throw out as you're going through this. It's not, I don't expect an answer tonight, but
Yeah.
Something to be thought about.
I guess the other thing is, um, often something like that needs to be thought of really holistically. So something like adding the density at the on Market Street may mean that there's a a net gain in housing units in not only South Burlington, but in our city center that then supports businesses and supports everything, you know, it's sort of a a psych, a cyclical thing. Um, and even apart from the direct sort of impact on the TIF district, it's the reason that you, the city would choose to rezone something like that into, in a way that raises the value. It's raising the value because it raises the potential density. And the the city's doing it because the city has decided that it is a public good to raise the density in that location. So the decision is is like, the decision is already being made in the public interest. Um, so it's, it's not necessarily for conservation or for open space, but it's for, you know, uh, enabling greater development in a specific area that then takes the pressure off some other areas that are not necessarily direct conservation.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I totally agree with that. I was just seeing
Yeah.
Is there a way to take advan- not take advantage, but
No.
The city in in an even greater way.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a great thought. The, the only thing that, the other thing that gets tricky is requiring people, requiring a person to do something off of their own site becomes sort of a legal question very quickly. Um, and it ends up being a, you have to pay us to let, to then get the density that you want, and it gets really messy really fast. Um, so that's just the very short answer.
I guess one of the other things we've done, like when we, when we've upsoned, we've also, um, asked for more amenities and park space and stuff. So that's one thing we've thought about in the past. Like, we're at least getting better park space and better amenities, but, you know. But no monetary, it's neat idea. Um, Ryan?
Hey, I wanted to follow up with Lori's question, and I'm wondering if there's been any analysis about i- if the TDRs actually increase the value of properties um, of sending properties more than the actual sub-development of value. Because when I look at a lot of these properties, uh, especially in the the southeast quadrant that have larger lots, most of the value of the property is really the the home, and their value per acre is small, sometimes a tenth or even a twentieth of what mine is in like the post-war neighborhoods. So I I was just wondering if like, we know if this actually like pans out in reality.
Um, I'd say we haven't looked at the numbers specifically, but the the market for TDRs, the TDRs are somewhere in the ten thousand dollar range, which is for just under an acre of development potential. Um, so I would say actually developing that property is worth a lot more than ten thousand dollars. Um, so I, on balance, my, I haven't done the math out, but the the conceptual guess is that the TDR value is a lot less than the development value of the property.
Yeah, the range, TDR has been sold between eight thousand and fifteen thousand, four point eight three of an acre. So it's, it's a negotiation between buyer and seller. The city doesn't sit.
So anything else on this topic for tonight? Okay, we're only a little bit behind schedule. Um, we have two sets of minutes, January nine and January twenty-three. Okay, any discussion? Okay, on favor. We are unanimous. Paul raised his hand by video. Um, so under other business, we have, um, meetings. So the March twelfth meeting, um, we've identified a few of us are going to be out as well as we might be losing someone to council possibly, depending on how things go. And it's kind of right in that time when council is often like kind of revamping. So we were thinking about dates.
I will not be here March twelfth.
You will not. So that's
Okay, so we're, we've got to change it. So that means there's probably four of us have gone. We know of already, so.
Um, I should say I'm gone from the twenty-ninth of February to the seventeenth of March.
Okay, well, Michael's out, but, um, we could maybe find a time for some other
So would potentially that following the week of the eighteenth, um, be a possible um, week, we can maybe toss out a few dates to you. Um, it would mean two weeks back to back, but you would get the benefit of three weeks before it of not having a meeting.
Yeah.
March nineteenth plus or minus. I, we have to look to see if there's any other conflicts. It's a DRV night, but that's not
Yeah.
It's not a huge deal.
No, we would just prob- we would just probably be upstairs instead of here, room wise.
Yeah, yeah, I'm around that way. Yeah, so
Fifth is hard because it's town meeting day and it's just, it's, it's, it's a tricky date for us, and I don't think honestly we would be well positioned, given everything that you talked about tonight, to be ready for twenty-seven and then a week right after that.
Okay, so maybe, maybe, yeah.
I'm here.
Throw out a few days. I definitely can't do the Monday of a work meeting, definitely. But maybe like the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, can just see.
The nine, Tuesday, the nineteenth is a
Is everyone available on Tuesday, the nineteenth?
I don't believe so.
Duncan is a question mark?
You're a question mark that week, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't matter like Wednesday or Thursday, yeah.
Paul, do you have any dates that are better, the, um, week of the eighteen, the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth of March?
I don't think so. I think I'm pretty open.
Oh, I can't do the, um, affordable housing is on the twentieth. That's just me.
So nineteenth, maybe? Other than Duncan?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
And the next one?
Following Tuesday, right?
Would be the twenty-sixth.
And you're, you're around the
Next one on the twenty-fifth.
Well, so your next one from tonight would be the twenty-seventh of February, and then following that would be March nineteen and March twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else? Go ahead.
I don't know where it goes, but so in, uh, City Plan twenty twenty-four. In City Plan twenty twenty-four, we have got a, uh, map where some streets were changed and some um, recreation path was changed. We also have an official city map that shows streets. Does City Plan twenty twenty-four replace that or do we?
Not automatically. It's the same as the LDRs. So the city plan, um, enables, it sets the policy that enables the planning commission to change the official map. So the official map is the same level as our written regulations and our zoning district map. Um, so what the planning commission should do sooner than later, but it's not like an emergency, is to make changes to the official map that reflect the changes on the city plan maps.
Does that then have to go to, uh, public hearing?
Yep, it's the same as an LDR change. It's not the multiple public hearings system as the, um, city plan. It's more like when we make changes to the LDRs and there's a warning and then a hearing at this level, and then it goes to council. And they hold the hearing as well.
It is, it is an extended process. It matches exactly zoning change.
Yep.
So should it be included with something or?
We will look to see when we can weave it in.
Right, thanks.
Come on, you guys aren't doing anything.
Just hanging out.
Just something extra for Kelsey.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
I have a question for you.
Thanks, Paul. Great meeting.
Thank you, Jessica. Yeah, it was.
Yeah. And I'm the question for Paul.
Hi, everybody.
On a map. Because he's got some better GIS data than we have. No, I have two maps here.
The one with the, with the water resources. That, that answered so many questions that I had.